Okay, folks, it's six o'clock and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council order. Today is Tuesday, May 27, 2025, and we're in the council chambers in Platteville. We'll start with roll call. Colette. Ken Killian?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Lynn Parrott? Tony McFall?
Right here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda then is a special presentation. We have the swearing in of a new Platteville police officer. So I'll have Officer Ettinger, the chief, and Colette, our clerk, come to the front and we'll get that this done. And you guys can stand up if you want to go get closer. It's okay. We're pretty informal here.
Hi, Nicholas Ettinger. Having been appointed to the office of police officer, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. Faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of set office to the best of my abilities. So help me God. Thank you. So I want to first off, thank everyone here for giving me this great opportunity to serve this community, and I can't wait for many more years.
And where are you from?
I'm originally from Sterling, Illinois.
Okay.
Sterling, Illinois?
Did you get it, Ken?
What did you say?
Sterling.
Sterling.
Sterling, Illinois.
Oh, Illinois.
It's okay.
You're out of state.
Be accepted.
He's out of state. You're right.
Yes, sir.
So how long have you lived in Wisconsin?
Um, I've been a resident for about eight months, but I've been here going to the college for five.
Good.
So.
All right. And your family is with you and we welcome them and thank you for coming and we look forward to Officer Ettinger serving our community in to the best of his ability. So welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. That's it. And you guys can stay or you can go. You don't have to feel obligated to stay. Uh, Ken?
How many police officers do we have now?
Twenty? Do we have twenty officers? Nineteen.
Nineteen.
All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is ordinance 25-02. It's a property rezone at 500 North Water Street. Joe, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so the property at 500 North Water Street was historically a combination of residential and commercial, two small buildings on there. The commercial building had previously been removed and now it's a single family home, but started remodeling it. It's never quite been completed. The outside's done, but the inside's not quite complete yet. The applicant is interested in changing the zoning of that property. Basically, it's zone B1 neighborhood commercial, which does allow that combination, commercial and residential. But he'd like to demolish that existing building and build back a new single family home at that location. So the issue that he's running into with that current zoning is since that building, it's a historical building as far as it's been there a while, but it doesn't meet the current setbacks. So it's a legal non-conforming structure. So he can stay there as long as he wants it to, but once he starts talking about demolishing it and rebuilding, then it loses that non-conforming status. So it would have to be rebuilt to the current setbacks. And since that's a fairly small lot and it's on a corner, by the time you apply the required setbacks to that lot, it does not leave a very large buildable area for the to meet the ordinance requirements. So the advantage of changing the zoning as requested to R2 one and two family residential, that district still allows the single family use as proposed, but it also has a provision that existing legal non-conforming structures, if they're removed or destroyed, can be rebuilt essentially to the same setbacks. So that gives him or would give him the opportunity to rebuild basically a new single family structure essentially to that same footprint or similar footprint to what's there now, but that could legally be done with that new zoning. So that is the reason for the request is just to provide the additional building area that he needs to build that building back. So staff does recommend approval that that R2 zoning is essentially the same zoning as basically that entire neighborhood except the armory across the street and the one house to the net to the west. So it does fit the neighborhood. The plan commission considered this and recommended approval as well. Any questions?
Questions? No, otherwise we'll move on to the applicant statement. I see Mr. Ryder is here, so we'll have.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for listening for my consideration. Like Joe had stated, this property.
You have to first date your name and your address for the just for the record.
Okay. Michael Ryder. What else? My address is 1072 Woodland Road in the township of Platteville. So like Joe stated, I don't think there's anything I can add to that except that he had talked that had been under construction for several years, not necessarily on the exterior, but on the interior. And what I've struggled with is that sits on the ground and there's three rows of block and it's always been in the back of my head that hey, it's really not stick worth sticking a lot of money into this. And then when the hail storm came along, it was kind of trumped the fact that hey, it's time to make this happen now by putting like a design home in there, a small design home that would fit the same footprint of the existing house and then a garage which would be smaller than the existing south portion of that structure is right now. This is something that timeframe wise, if it would go through, is I'd like to get the house demoed by October of this year and a new basement and that would go with the full basement there by by April of next year, set the house by, oh, let's say June or July of next year and take residency there in the fall of '26. To answer your question, I know it's coming. Is this going to be a rental property? And it's no. I am getting close to retirement age. We have a big house in the township, looking at selling that. And then this would be my personal property that we move into for a retirement home.
Okay, questions of Mr. Ryder. Ken?
Yes. Did I hear you say that you have cement block walls at the present time?
Three rows of cement blocks. There's no foundation except for those block.
I recommend that you get rid of them. One of the worst things you can have is cement block housing. I live in a in a home that has cement block and so the mice come in and all the other creatures and it's bad, bad, bad.
And we struggle with in the winter time with the traps as far as the drain traps underneath. If it's a cold winter and we get a strong wind, they will freeze up and then I got water overflow. And so it just it's kind of outworn its useful life.
Okay.
One time, my house, I had fourteen mice in the basement. They just come in all over.
Well, Ken, that would have been almost enough to skin and make a pair of gloves, right?
I'm just telling them my experience.
All right. Thank you, Mike. We'll move on. I have had nobody register to speak in favor. I've had nobody register to speak against and have had nobody register to speak generally about this. So we're to the part of the public hearing that is council discussion. Any discussion on this?
So from what I understand, then he just wants to take what's already his and pretty much renovate it, not knock it all down.
No, he wants to knock it all down.
He does.
He's going to knock it all down on the corner and then he's going to build and he's going to set on a design. He's going to pour a basement or set a basement. I don't know. I guess pour a basement, then set a designer home on it and build a garage that's probably attached to the house. And the reason for the rezone is because the way the corner lot is situated and the size, he can't get all the setbacks necessary, front side, back, without rezoning to R2, which is consistent with the neighborhood. Okay. If there's no other discussion, then I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Ken?
Can we make comments later?
About what?
About housing. Housing, are you interested in having a place as far as shelter against tornado?
He's going to put in a basement and I
Put a basement in.
I I think that we don't have housing on our agenda tonight, so I don't think that we're going to talk about housing.
Well, I'm just going to tell them that in my house, I built it addition in 1975 and I connected the rafters to the foundation. And then in my house, I put in thirteen chains to hold the roof to the to the foundation. So that is a very easy thing to do. And also, how thick are your walls as far as insulation? Six inches? What what are you using? U-rthing? What sort of thing are you using for insulating your house? I'm just curious to have.
And it will be built to the Wisconsin Uniform Dwelling Code in order to qualify. So the basement would have an R15 in the basement for insulation. Walls upstairs would be a 21 and the attic would be a 49. And it's an all all engineered designed hot home. So.
That's a design home like out of Prairie Des Cheneaux where design homes are. Okay. Again, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
First to close the public hearing.
And a second? Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn to close the public hearing. Colette will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, does anyone want to offer a motion?
Make a motion to approve rezoning the property at 500 North Water Street to R2 one and two family residential.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Ken to approve this request for rezoning. Colette will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And you're welcome to stay, Mike, or you're also welcome to leave. Okay. Uh, next on our agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single vote, motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. We have the council minutes from May 13. We have payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have three. I have Gene Tesdahl to the museum board, his term starting seven one twenty seven one 2025 and serving through seven one 2029. I also have to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee, Angie Wright and Cody Bakanik?
Henick.
Bohanik. Each to three-year terms, beginning June 1 and serving through June 1 until June 1, 2029. Licenses, there are one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as in your packet. And we have one permit request for a street closing of Irving Place from South Court Street to North Bonson Street on Saturday, June 21, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for Pride in the Park. So do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to, excuse me, I move to approve all items listed under consent agenda.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Ken to move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Colette will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And tonight I do have someone who has requested to speak, and that would be Mr. Tim Ingram. So, Tim?
Can you hear me all?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Timothy Ingram. I live at 25 West Main Street, 273537. I own the both buildings. I own the bicycle shop. And for 25 years, I love our parades. I love our promotional things we have on Main Street, but every year we do this. We Ziploc a all the light posts to promote the whether it be the raids or the car show or something like that. And then after it happens, this ends up on Main Street. Okay. And then actually before it happens, if if the they usually promote the event two or three days beforehand, and then they usually get there's that bar crowd that usually takes these off, this thrones in the street, I have to pick it up. This is or worse yet, at three o'clock in the morning, I live on Main Street, my and I get to listen to two guys having a Star Wars fight, boom, 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 outside my window with these sticks, if you know Star Wars. And I'm just thinking maybe in the fluted, the light poles that are fluted, there could be maybe placed into there that things could be stapled to and then staples could come off or maybe a clipboard, maybe a clipboard that things would be clipped on. But I pick these things up all the time. And I was just thinking, maybe there would be more better way to promote our events, which I I love our events. Don't don't be, I mean, don't I love those events, but it's just like every time there's event, this is in my gutter. This is in my gutter. I have to pick them up and I have to go down. I go down Main Street. I try to pick them up throughout the Main Street. This is my neighborhood. So I was just asking the the community, maybe think about maybe a better way events and display the events. Maybe it'd be a nice piece of black next to the light poles that things are stapled to, or maybe a clipboard that they're put to. But I'm, you know, this is in our this in our sewage system, our water. Yes. I'd really like to see something a little bit better for our community. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you. And I don't know which of which of our departments over there would be maybe in charge and and that no comment needed tonight, but maybe.
I'm not expecting any answers. I just I just wanted to bring it to the attention to our community. Like I said, I live on Main Street. So 25 years, I see this all the time. So.
So we have innovative people. So maybe we'll get a little bit of innovation going here.
Jim, I have to tell you, that is something really great that you're doing, that you're coming up with that idea that we need to do something.
Thank you.
Many times we might be able to enlist university to possibly come up with a design.
Be really cool.
So all I'm saying is, I agree with you about the sticks and the tie wraps. Of course, the sticks come in handy for us putting in for on lawns along other streets, but downtown myself, I look think it looks a little tacky. And if we could do something else, that would be great. So if you happen to know of anybody that might have some ideas or might be able to have people come into your shop and say, I understand you're looking for ideas and they have some, please feel free to bring them to us.
I know some people.
So because I I think it's very important that people understand that our downtown businesses.
You mentioned the word tacky, and I would have to say this on Main Street, especially when the kids rip them off and they're like hanging off like this, it does look Main Street. It does make Main Street look really tacky.
Tacky. Okay. So.
Thank you, Tim.
I know we want to move on, but thank you too for bringing that to our attention. As you were talking, I was writing down visual board or responsible for picking them up. So I'm thinking if I don't know, like you said, I don't know who's department this is, but whoever attacked them on there, if they could have like a timeline where they actually get them off of it sooner than, you know, maybe right before the event is happening. So that could be one thing, like whatever department is responsible for putting them on there or if this however.
I think currently, Doug, I'm certain.
So I'm sure Will.
PD is the ones that usually goes through and puts them in. It was just like the PD is doing this. And it's like, really? Does the PD need?
Right. And then I was thinking about our visual boards that are already on Main Street, which are a little cleaner if we could have that put on there. But again, that would have to be a discussion, but I we appreciate you for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding, no, correct me if I'm wrong, those are only used for no parking. They aren't used to promote.
They're just no parking.
The activity.
Parade. Anytime there's a parade.
Right.
Event or like on there. Yeah, for no parking stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No parking.
Parade. And when they have the first payroll for any event, any the homeschool parade or any parade or anything like that, that's when then they go up.
Okay.
So.
Good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and we'll we'll look for innovative.
I've been thinking about this for like three years and I finally got the gun as to come up and say something.
Great.
Bless yourself.
Now go home and take care of those dogs.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tim, I don't remember dismissing you. I I think I said everybody else could leave, but I didn't say you could leave.
Ma'am, can I leave?
We thought maybe you wanted to stay for the rest of the meeting. No. All right. Okay, reports in the packet. We'll move on to. Oh, did anybody else have any citizens' comments, observations, or petitions? I see it's a library t-shirt.
I I just want to make a comment. Yesterday, in our city auditorium, we had the Memorial Day program, which was wonderful. And I would just like to give a shout out to the VFW and the American Legion for organizing that, the everybody that was involved. It was a wonderful program. And also, we drove through a number of the cemeteries yesterday. The city crews that take care of the cemeteries did an amazing job. It was bar none. They were beautiful and with all of the flags out there, our cemeteries were gorgeous. So thank everyone for who played a part in that yesterday.
I will thank you.
And a special thanks to Shannon for being the bugler. Yeah. Little did we know. All right. Anybody else with any? Okay, then let's move on to the reports in the packet. Plan Commission, Bob, anything? I don't either. Community Safe Routes, Tom?
Nothing to add.
Parks Recreation and Forestry or Parks Forestry and Recreation, Bob?
Um, nothing to add.
Okay. Commission on Aging, Kathy? Library Board?
Nothing to add. We did have a really nice loud at the library though. And I didn't get an email or anything else to add, but I think this is pretty accurate right here.
Okay. Water and Sewer Commission?
I got a question.
On?
Parks. Uh, it says this is minutes March 17. I haven't been here for a while, but I did want to find out this. It says here at the bottom of the page, new rail installed on February 25. After close examination, it was worse than originally thought and had damaged the floor. In the ceiling, cut the panels back two feet, took down track, replaced the track, put the pieces back. Would you explain to me what was done?
Sure. So this, the rail that was holding the door.
First of all, move back. It's the dividing. It's the dividing, the thing that divides the the broadback from the
East, east and west.
Two halls.
The two halls.
So we're talking about that big door that they pull through.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, they can call it door wall, dividing wall. But so that rail had been sagging and the weight of that wall has been bringing it down. So then it started, we started to notice it was cutting into the floor. That rail had to be replaced. So we had gotten bids and quotes to get that rail replaced. And unfortunately, the design was that we'd have to take most of this complete ceiling out because of the fire suppressant system, the electric and the lighting in there. So instead that that number would have been close to $30,000. So instead of that, they came down and we actually were able to remove, cut just a little over two feet on each side of the rail, and then we could get to the rail and take it down.
Oh, what is the composition of the rail?
Steel.
Steel?
Yes.
So it was it was settling the steel.
Yes. Yes. So the rail is, you know, in a U-shaped form and the weight and that rides on the the rollers ride inside that rail.
It says the costs are 12,000 to maybe 90,000.
Yeah, they got an extra zero in there. When Debbie wrote up the minutes, it should have been, yeah, the bill was going to be between 15,000 and we're hoping to settle at around 9,000 or under 10,000. Because there were some discrepancies in the agreement and what was actually billed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's see. We had gotten to Parks Recreation and Water and Sewer Commission. Anything to add, Tom?
None.
None. We'll hear about the discussion at Water and Sewer a little bit later when we talk about the repairs for Pine Street. So that's the reports in the packet. Let's move on to the action items. The first one is contract 7-25 for street maintenance. This is for thin overlays. Howard?
Correct. Thank you. This is our annual project for overlays using the estimated 110,000 in wheel tax funding. In recent years, we've only done the thin overlays, three quarters of an inch to enhance the ride and delay deterioration for seven to 10 years. We opened one bid from Iverson Construction. No, no surprise there. The base bid was a little over 88,000. I had two additional streets. If you do both of the additional streets, the grand total is a little over 117,000. Per Administration Director Maurer, the wheel tax revenue has exceeded budget revenues over the past few years. And we believe that there's an accumulated excess of revenues and we believe it prudent to include those additional two streets. So we recommend awarding the contract for the base bid plus alternates for that for that amount. You can see I've got the list of streets, the bid tabulation, and then there's a map. The the primary streets were in red and the additional streets were in green on your map.
Okay, questions about thin overlays and this request to spend 117,230 and 30 cents, 37 cents, which is 7,230 dollars and 26 cents over expected revenue, but to be covered by accumulated excess revenue. over expected revenue, but to be covered by accumulated excess revenue. Any questions? Uh, I, Howard, related to this, uh, I did send uh, do you have a map that shows all thin overlays ever done?
I don't believe that I have a, a consolidated map. I mean, I have individual maps like this.
Right.
Every year.
Right. Well, it'd be interesting to see a consolidated map. And then I have asked Howard, I, when we started this, we were able to do a whole lot more than we are now. So uh, in twenty twenty-three, I had uh, asked Howard for a chart that showed how much we were able to do because I think costs went up fifty percent on um, the stuff we use that year. So we were able to do about half as much. So I've, I've now asked Nicola and Howard to kind of update that for us. I sometimes hear people complaining about how much we aren't doing or how much we are doing. And I think it's instructive to know that uh, how much we used to be able to do before prices went up so drastically and how much that has, because our wheel tax hasn't gone up. The amount we're collecting hasn't gone up, but certainly the cost of doing the thin overlay has gone up. So uh, just ask for that. As soon as that's available, we'll just distribute it to everyone. So you can see that. Okay, questions on thin overlay? Can?
Yes. My memory on this is that the state cut down how much they were going to give us. So we decided one year to instigate to do the wheel tax. So that took care of that one year. So what did you do as far as talking to the people that, that have cut back our monies as far as coming to the city to take care of doing this particular project? This is, this is, I'm giving you the history of it. That's, that's what I view as the history.
I understand. There's, there, there's a couple of different issues involved in this. Uh, we get, we get general transportation aids.
We're not getting enough money from the state. They're chopping us off year after year. We're not getting enough money for schools. Just keep on going down the list. And we don't have good enough people in the state as far as doing business with the city of Platteville and the state of Wisconsin in general, period.
Um.
Call the order.
Thanks.
Yeah. Let's uh, let's move back to this contract. We can debate all night whether we're getting enough money and it won't really, it won't, it doesn't really help. So uh.
That's the case.
I understand. So uh, do we have a motion on this uh, street maintenance base bid for thin overlays this year?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Bob?
I move to award contract seven dash twenty-five, street maintenance base bid plus alternates to Iverson Construction for the proposed streets for thin overlay in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents with an over budget amount to be funded from the excess of revenues over the, over expenditures from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four.
Second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Lynn to award contract seven dash twenty-five uh, to Iverson Construction based at the amount a hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Colette will vote. Killian?
Reluctantly, I'll vote for this thing. Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall? Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next item, item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-five dash O six in support of the Grant County Sheriff's Department's application to apply for a grant to fund a dispatch study. Chief?
The Platteville PD and the Grant County Sheriff's Department are exploring options for the future of emergency communications and emergency notifications in southwest Wisconsin. Um, a grant application is proposed to be submitted for a twenty twenty-five public service answering, uh, public safety answering point grant. If the grant submission is successful, the funds would be used to pay for an in-depth study of the current delivery of emergency communications, future needs of both agencies and the people they serve, technology requirements, and trends in the field of emergency communications. Uh, the grant does have a local match requirement of ten percent, which we are proposing would be split equally between Grant County and Platteville.
Okay. Uh, comments on this? Any comments or questions? So this is uh, a resolution to support the submission of an application. This application to apply for a grant to fund a study.
Correct.
And it appears that it could, uh, the cost for us could be approximately four thousand dollars, which would have to be included in this year's budget? Or where is the money coming from?
The grant um, submission would be this year. When we would get notification, um, we're hopeful it would be this year.
Okay, so.
Potentially.
So we have, we have money in our budget to cover this right now?
We would find the money to.
Okay. That's my question. There's four thousand dollars required. Uh, yeah. I don't have it on my desk, so, but Bob might down at the end. No, I guess he can't find it either. Right. All right. Uh, any other questions? Otherwise I'd call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution, Resolution twenty-five O six in support of a grant application to fund a study on the future of the delivery of emergency communications for Grant County and the city of Platteville.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Tom to approve Resolution twenty-five dash O six, uh, which funds uh, in support of a grant application. Uh, Colette, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Resolution twenty-five dash O seven, declaring an emergency under Wisconsin State Statute sixty-two point one five pair and one B for Pine Street repairs. Howard?
Thank you. Uh, April eighth, we had a water main break on Pine Street, uh, just east of Fourth Street. The crews uh, repaired the leak um, and uh, but the uh, brake tore a section of pipe instead of just a small crack or a hole. We ended up replacing a small section of pipe, backfilling with gravel and a temporary patch of cold mix on those immediate areas. Since that time, Delta Three Engineering has identified additional areas that have been undermined and compromised uh, basically from Fourth Street down to Second Street. We really need to have the concrete removed and replaced. Uh, upon discussion with the Water and Sewer Commission, we were looking at two different options. One is to replace the water main and pavement from Oak Street to Fourth Street. In two thousand and six, there was a similar break and the block from water to Oak Street was replaced. So this option would replace the water main in the damaged section to eliminate all the old water main, main uh, between Water Street and Fourth Street. The second option would be to replace the water main and pavement from Oak Street to Chestnut Street, which would eliminate all the water main from water to Chestnut Street. Uh, we recently received uh, opinions of uh, the cost estimates for these options. Option one, roughly a hu- two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And option two, just under eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh, for those two different areas. Uh, if we declare it as an emergency, uh, it will streamline our normal bidding. We would solicit quotes from multiple vendors. And uh, um, at this point, I'm not sure that we could complete either of these in June, but we would uh, work around all of our uh, other events uh, to try to get it done by mid-August. The other, um, we would end up following standard bidding procedures and hopefully get it complete by Labor Day. We rec, uh, Water and Sewer Commission reviewed this and they recommend approval of this resolution declaring an emergency. And their motion will initially was to replace from Oak to Fourth Street. So um, so that's, that's what they, they recommend. And so um, at this point, that's what we're recommending. Just so that you understand, uh, there was some, there was the discussion about detouring traffic. This morning, what happened was our crews went in and replaced the cold mix asphalt with hot mix asphalt for the main line uh, portion um, there on Pine Street so that there's less of a bump and there's no squishing of the pavement or any of that. We left the left turn, we kept the left turn lane as is because it doesn't have as much traffic and it hasn't been displaying as much uh, distress as the other. And we think that it will last uh, until we can get the more permanent solution. So that's what we have for right now.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Initially, um, we talked about here replacing the whole section, the whole portion from in front of Pioneer Ford up to First English Lutheran Church. That was the initial.
But when did we talk about that?
Years ago.
Oh, years ago. Okay.
Yes. And so that, that was the thing that was to be done. So my question now is, why are you just going to this portion, stopping at this big area? That it initially should, the whole thing should have been placed, replaced years ago. So what is the issue? You couldn't get the people to drive up, uh, what's the street? Chestnut Street? Is that the problem?
At this point, sir, the, the issue is the, is the cost. Uh, you have in front of you the, the cost estimates. The cost estimate to do from Oak to Fourth Street is roughly two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. To do the entire thing from Oak Street to Chestnut is almost eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars because of the additional length and the additional work that we would need to do to make sure that uh, uh, the cross streets got uh, taken care of and, and things like that. So um, if the Water and Sewer Commission and the Council wishes to uh, spend the additional money, we can certainly do uh, from Oak all the way up to Chestnut Street.
Well, I think now my question is, if we did the whole thing, where would the traffic go? The heavy traffic?
Probably on Main Street.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering about.
Uh, there are no good solutions to this. We would probably also end up potentially staging some of the work on Chestnut Street to keep some of that intersection open as much as we could.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's my memory of what should be taking place, but um, we don't have all the dollars.
So uh, I do have a couple of questions. There's only a two-week time difference between declaring an emergency and not declaring an emergency? You said mid-August and Labor Day. I believe mid-August is August fifteenth in my book. Labor Day is around the first of our uh, September, so we're talking about two weeks? I'm just.
Please.
I'm just saying, especially because we're declaring an emergency on a street that's being used. And I thought our attorney said to us that it's pretty hard to prove you have an emergency if in fact you haven't closed the street.
Right. So that initial schedule that we were coming up with at the Water and Sewer Commission of mid-August versus the end of August was one of the options, taking into the Southwest Music Festival into account. So we were going to either, we had to have everything pretty much, uh, we had to have a plan done by this Friday. Quotes uh, back by basically June sixth. And then we have to have a special meeting on, on June eleventh. That's a very short timeframe in order to try to get the work done. And the goal there was to try to have it done before Fourth of July. Now that we've gone an extra block, um, we can't have it done before Fourth of July if we want to not have any traffic issues on Fourth of July. So the next thing that we run into is the Southwest Music Fest. So then we have to wait till after Southwest Music Fest because that was a comment because of the traffic and stuff like that. If we take that out of the equation, then it's not the middle of August. Now we're back to the middle of July for completion date. So we were just trying to avoid Fourth of July, avoid Southwest Music Fest. And that's where the, at the middle of August date came from. So if we don't have to worry about Fourth of July, we don't have to worry about uh, Southwest Music Fest, then, you know, basically we, we put that timeframe up to, to the middle of July.
So it's really not probably the Southwest Music Fest, it's probably the Southwest Music Fest on the same day as the Car Cruise.
Yeah, that whatever.
I, I think it's more like the Car Cruise than it is the Southwest Music Fest because I don't see the Southwest Music Fest interfering.
It's just the additional traffic was a concern.
Right, but it's really the Car Cruise.
Yep.
Which is, yeah, cause I'm like sitting here going, the, the Music Fest doesn't make a difference. So does it actually then make a difference if we declare an emergency or not?
Um, it still, it still uh, increases the, the timeframe, you know, or shortens the timeframe for us to do that. You know, and, and instead of, so from my perspective, putting out a plan for an emergency where we're going to get quotes from contractors versus doing a full bid set, that's a time factor as well. So when I'm putting out a bid set, or I'm not even calling, I'm putting out a quote set for the, say this Friday. You know, it's going to be complete, but there's going to be some interpretation required by the contractors. And then we review the quotes and we go over that with them. Whereas if we have to bid, I, I'm going to be another two or three weeks out before a full bid set where I have to, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is.
And it would be nice to have it completed before the school year begins.
Correct.
Before UW Platteville comes back in session, which is the end of August. So, you know, I'm, I'm just playing the devil's advocate here. I like to do that, you know?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And Dan, I have a question though about the timeline. You, if I'm, I know there's a lot of things that happen on the Fourth of July, but it's not like there's a parade. We don't close the street. So the timeline, if that's moved, I mean, we could.
If we eliminate the Fourth of July, if we would declare an emergency and we can proceed, and if, for example, if we're just doing Oak to Fourth, the, a couple contractors that we've talked to, um, they feel they could have this done by the middle of July. If we throw in the section up to Chestnut Street, which is not a terribly bad idea, but it's a, it's a time and a money issue, then basically everything is going to be, it's going to be a now until August. And that first timeframe only is talking about the first few, from Oak to Fourth. If we throw in Labor Day, um, we really need to get going on. We would have to declare emergency to have that done by Labor Day. And um, we're talking about, like Howard mentioned, we're talking about traffic up Main Street. We're talking about staging of work. We're talking maybe temporary traffic signals. We're going to have to look at just about every traffic control option out there to try to keep as much, you know, keep things going. Yes, Ken?
Are you, are you going to encourage heavy traffic? Are you going to encourage heavy traffic coming up from the old Ford garage area? Are you going to encourage it coming up uh, past the Lutheran Church that way?
Uh, there is no good route for heavy truck traffic on water, or to, to bypass Pine Street, going up Pine Street. And so that's why we have to look at all the different options. Um, I believe. I believe Howard and I had a brief conversation that if we have to bring it up Main Street, that we are going to have to restrict parking at the top of Main Street, which I know the bank and the businesses there will not probably appreciate. If we try to take him over to Furnace Street, Furnace Street is, is not, is not wide enough for heavy truck traffic. So that caused problems. I mean, if you just start going right down the line, you know, you start getting all the way up to the middle school and there's just no good route to come, to go from Water Street up to Highway 81 without going through a narrow street or either a high, a highly-used street like Main Street with a lot of pedestrian traffic and a lot of parked cars, narrow street like Furnace Street, or now we're going to start weaving traffic through residential areas, which is not optimal. We talked about possibly rerouting all the way back down to Chestnut Street and coming through the roundabout and going up that direction. But we all know that at that point in time, we're going to still have semis trying to cut through because their GPS is going to tell them to go up Main Street, go up Furnace Street, and we're going to have problems. So we would, you know, regardless of, of what option is chosen tonight, that is something that we're going to have to, to work with, the truck as well, you know, DOT, city, et cetera.
So I think, Ken, those alternate, alternatives were all included in your packet there, those three. Yeah, so. I, Howard, would the entire $284,975 come from Water and Sewer? Where does this money come from?
It would come from Water and Sewer.
Including the concrete?
Yes, because, because we're, we're doing a replacement of Water Main. So any, any reconstruction of pavement above the Water Main replacement would be chargeable to the water utility.
So this is about $90,000 then, in excess of the $194 you had available because you were under budget on the Seventh Avenue project?
That's correct.
All right, so Water and Sewer is going to have to come up with an, an additional $90,000, $91,000, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
What are you using for tool to replace the pipe that starts up?
We're going to use PVC, the current pipe is ductile iron.
Question. Leading to the two options. If, what is the thought, or what was the thought to do Oak to Chestnut? I mean, what, does that eventually going to need to be replaced? Because if we don't do it now, where down the road is that? Where is that fitting in? I mean, is it in good condition? Is the--
It's 70 years old, right?
Going to match up?
The, the Water Main is pretty much the same age and condition from Oak Street up to Chestnut Street. We have had breaks up above Fourth Street before. The, the biggest difference is the hill, the slope of the hill. From Fourth Street on down, the power of the water undermined the pavement through there. If, if a, if a Water Main break occurs, say, up by Court Street by the post office, it will do some undermining, but it won't be as extensive as it was on the hill because it, it won't run between the gravel and the, and the concrete as much or as powerfully as it does on the hill. So that's really the issue. It's the same age pipe and it's the same condition. You know, it could do anything it wants to.
Yeah, and these are unbudgeted expenditures.
And they're unbudgeted.
So I wanted to say that the first proposal brought to Water and Sewer was simply to go from Second to Fourth Street. So it was just to replace two blocks, Second to Fourth Street. And then when Water and Sewer found out that the, there was new pipe from Pine to Oak, and then we were going to have old pipe from Oak to Second, and then we were going to have new pipe from Second to Fourth, it just didn't seem like it was a very-- that, that, so we asked for the addition of that one block and then one of the members said, we should get a, an, an estimate of what it would cost to go all the way to Chestnut. So, you know, I don't know how that affects the Water and Sewer budget. I think we can probably absorb the $90,000. I don't know if we can go from absorbing $90,000 to absorbing 3/4 of a million.
So the project will be borrowed for, and the borrow could be funded with the regularly scheduled Water and Sewer revenue bond issue that we would do this year anyway for the other CIP construction. It will still have an impact. I mean, it's, you know, there's debt repayment which has to be covered through the Water and Sewer--
Because it's a revenue bond.
Specifically water rates in this case, so. But it's, i- in terms of, it's not like we have to take it out of the general fund reserves. I mean, it's coming from borrowed funds, as I said, which would be added to the regularly scheduled Water Sewer revenue bond. The, the council has authority over issuing those bonds. The Water Sewer Commission has authority over its budget. So the, the Water Sewer Commission would have to approve the budget amendment, I believe.
And, excuse me, is, uh, everything in construction is probably three times of what it was 10 years ago? So I mean, if you wait to do it, potentially could cost the city more, something to think about.
And I was also curious, is, would we be saving money to do both sections now? I mean, I understand the, the inflationary costs by waiting, but is it also less expensive if you just have the people here take care of it while they're here?
Typically, yes. I don't have, I didn't, I left my cost estimate back there, but I believe I, for the, the first one from Oak to Fourth, I might have used $90 a square yard for concrete and I dropped it to $80 a square yard just because we have more quantity. If I didn't do that, I thought about doing that, I apologize. But, but yes, that's--
You did, you--
Did I, okay.
You went from 100 a square yard to $80--
Yeah, and that's just because now we're getting into, you know, we're getting into some volume at that point in time. And that's just one particular item. I didn't do it for many, any of the other ones because I know it's going, I mean, it's not an easy job and not only is it going to cost more, but it's going to become more challenging in time just because of the other utilities that are constantly being installed in, in the, you know, in the streets.
Like we'd have to rent, like, traffic control things, temporary signals?
That's, that's an option that we'd like, that we'd like to look at. It's just that when we do that, then we have some impacts to the side streets. You know, so it's, it would be a way to keep traffic on Pine Street. However, we would have to, if you've seen those, you know, the temporary traffic signals would have to move with the project. We'd have to get certain sections of the concrete pavement done and ready to go. But the impact, the major part is going to be the side streets. So for example, Oak Street, McGregor Plaza would have to be blocked off and people would have to go other directions for those. So it's not just a, that, it would be great if we could do that, but I think there would be some pushback, especially from McGregor Plaza folks, the businesses there. But something we could look at, we will look at.
I was just wondering, like, if you had to rent them, if it'd be just better to rent them once than--
And that is too, I think if you look at the bottom of the page, I think I put the option, I think it was like 10 to 12 or, and then 12 to 15. The biggest cost of those is, is getting them there and then it's on a per-day basis. So on a per-day basis, the, 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 the cost goes down, but it's just the fact of getting them there, the upfront mobilization and usage cost. Thank you.
Well, I think tonight, the question on our agenda is whether to declare an emergency.
Correct.
So I think the resolution is about declaring a emergency under state statute 62.15 parent 1B. It's not about, tonight it's not about the money as much as declaring an emergency. So that we don't have to go through the regular, longer bidding process. So the question is, do we want to declare an emergency or not?
Well, just one other question. If, if we pass the emergency resolution and it says we're going to direct staff to solicit quotes, are we going to get quotes for both options? So we will--
Okay, I think it's going to come back to Water and Sewer. Yeah, and we'll, yeah.
Um, right.
Maybe naive, but why wouldn't we declare an emergency if that's an option?
Yeah, that's right, so that's the question is--
We'll approve Resolution 2507, declaring an emergency under state statutes, directing staff to solicit quotes from multiple vendors.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy, a second by Lynn, to declare an emergency under state statute 62.15 parent 1B. And this is relative to work for Pine Street and to direct staff then to solicit quotes from multiple vendors. So we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is the contract for the Aquatic Center Construction Manager.
Madam President, as we talked about in our last meeting, we've engaged in a, a process of trying to solicit for a construction manager at-risk position. We put our bids out in compliance with state statutes to allow for our responses back. We interviewed three construction firms today and they're bringing forward a recommendation on one of those. The process was led by Director Lau, Bob. It involved Councilmember Bob Gates. We also had Howard Crowfoot, Dan Dreesens, Cody Bohanik. And we also had support from our engineer and architect, Andy Pennekamp, and also Kate Holland helping us through the process. Our interviews today, of course, we always learn so much with our interview type of a process and we settled on one firm that's being brought to you for your consideration tonight. The supplemental sheet that was handed out at the beginning of the meeting lists the recommendation. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to negotiate and offer a contract to Epic Construction of Keeler, Wisconsin for the role of construction manager at-risk for the Aquatic Center Reconstruction Project with a base project budget of $6.9 million. The rationale and considerations are kind of laid out and for summary sake, Epic came forward with a strong team and local connection on sites. The organization is from Keeler, Wisconsin. Brad Beerman, who would be the project manager, is of course from the area of Brent, who's, would be our site managers from the area together. They have both worked for Epic for over 20 years. So they have a very close and local tie to the area. Direct experience and construction background. Epic's portfolio had a few pool projects, including hotel and pool lodges, including notably Deer Valley Lodge and Sleep Inn up in Lancaster. They specialize in self-performance though, is, is more geared towards carpentry steel than it is towards concrete work and then especially vertical concrete work. So they would be looking to focus more on the construction management aspect of it, potentially self-bidding or bidding for self-work for some of the, for some of the carpentry type work. Pre-construction involvement and transparency. They gained a lot of credibility with their demonstration of an understanding of their pre-construction phase roles and helping identify some of the big categories and helping us negotiate through, navigate through the bid type of a process. One thing that came very appealing to them is they're coming forward with a flat rate fee. The other two construction companies came forward with a percentage of costs and talking back and forth provided the scope of work wouldn't change. The other ones may feel comfortable in going to a flat fee. But coming out of the gate, Epic came forward with a, no, we're going to operate at a flat fee and we're not going to try to necessarily nickel and dime you with a change of work orders and things of that nature. Responsiveness to warranties and long-term supports. Of course, all three said that they are very engaged with monitoring warranties and coming back for an 11-month or a, before season opens to go on a walk-through with the owner, ourselves and through our architect, engineer to ensure our warranties are in place. What really stood out with Epic was the comment of, if there's something wrong with your equipment or your pool, we don't want you chasing subcontractors. You come to us immediately and we will try to chase down the solutions and find resolution. Schedule of realism readiness, like our other vendors, Epic understands that in order to get these things in place, we have to be moving in a very expeditious manage, manner. We'd be looking to get a bid package out possibly as early as June and then hopefully getting a construction page, project out, package out in August or September. Epic acknowledges, like our other ones, that the aggressive timeline is going to be dependent on the weather. If we have a build season that is conducive to, to cement work later in the year, it makes it more possible, possible for a 26 spring opening. If things are not working out in that construction timeframe based on weather, it could be postponed. Coming out of the gates, Epic also realizes that a lot of this is going to be dependent on availability for the contractors doing such things as the cement work and who's going to be available on a short notice for this fall to be able to pour and, and do those types of services. Our references and doing a reference checks, of course, Epic comes from the area. Dan's had familiar and experience with Epic. We've also reached out to Chair Robert Keeney. Epic recently led them through the build of their Grant County Community Service Building and Bob reported exceptional experience with Epic and recommending that the city moves with them. Self-performance in constructing pools. Again, Epic does not build pool vessels in pouring cement work. They were going to be looking to work with a construction company that would bid on that portion or that unit of the project and monitoring, helping with a focus on the, the overall site coordination and helping with putting together the, the spit, the specifications and such. And I guess in conclusion then, while all three finalists were capable, Epic Construction stood out for their local commitment, dedicated staffing, value-conscious fee proposal and proactive stance on both construction planning and warranty service. Their pragmatic approach offers the city the best combination of cost control, quality assurance, schedule reliability for the Aquatic Center Reconstruction. And also in attendance today, of course, was Bob and Bob and Howard. If there were technical questions that you had for me, I would quickly defer to them. Madam President?
Okay, questions on awarding a contract for the Aquatic Center Construction Management Services? This would go to, the recommendation is Epic Construction out of Keeler as construction manager at-risk. Questions, Bob? And do you have anything you want to add, add to what Clint said? Or Robert, do you have anything you want to add? Or even Dan, you were there. Anybody?
I was just going to add the, the thank you to the guidance teams because we did a lot of work in a matter of two weeks and getting the RFPs out, getting the proposals in, reviewing the proposals, meeting about the reviews and then interviewing them and then making the decision. So it was done quickly, but I think it was done very well, so thank you to them.
Epic is involved in some other local things. They're doing the new gym in Cuba City. I'm sorry, they're doing, Epic is also doing the new gym in Cuba City. So they've, they've done some big things and a lot of hotels and hotel pools with, you know, kind of small water park-type aquatic centers. They were actually involved in the hotel block, the library block construction. And they were an impressive group.
Kathy? Just a minute, Kathy had her hand up first.
Just a basic clarification. Where does, um, our engineer come into play with this? Who's, who's, who's more in charge when it gets to that point where this is actually being built?
I'll start talking and let me know if I'm putting my foot in my mouth, smart people. But at this phase, when we're doing our designs now, the architect and the engineer is going to be heavily involved on crafting that. Our construction manager is going to be up to the table very quickly though to help with determining the means and, means and methods, that's the charge. That's the jargon we use in our little meetings. The means and methods on trying to shape that package to ensure that it's most feasible when we actually get to the construction. As we then get the bid package out, and we're working through those bits and pieces, and we start transitioning into construction, then that's when you see the construction manager really taking over the site, and the architect, engineer kind of being deferred to for questions and clarifications on specifications. Did I describe that correctly?
So, this is really kind of like what we have with the fire station, because we had Wendell Five Bugles as the engineer architect. And then we hired construction manager at-risk, Kramer Brothers. And as we've gone down the road, we hear less and see less from Wendell Five Bugles, and hear more and see more from the construction manager at-risk.
Correct. They're still very involved, especially for key components of oversight and doing observations. But it is, like you said, it's the same model we're doing with the fire facility. The construction manager at-risk also helps us then arrive at a guaranteed maximum price, which helps reduce overall risk if there is some unforeseen thing that arrives then at a cost for the construction manager at-risk. And it does then give us that third-party, every-day onsite monitoring what is going on to help again ensure that we're meeting specifications.
Okay, Kathy?
I just, then, the, my little bit of hesitations with item seven. I know that Epic has done a lot of really good work. So, it's not an issue with Epic. But we're saying that, as a construction manager, he doesn't have experience on building with the vertical cement work.
So, all three of the firms that we talked through, they do not specialize and do self-performance in that type of a work. The ones that would do that type of the work, where the feedback we got is not necessarily, they weren't interested in bidding to do it as a construction manager at-risk, because our construction manager at-risk by our RFP said that you're only allowed to do up to 50% of the total cost. And because that vessel and building that pool is going to be such a big thing with that component of it, there wasn't, there wasn't interest then in doing the construction manager at-risk. They'd rather wait and bid on doing the actual build part of it.
I, I think Dan could probably talk to a little bit more on their experience with the vertical wall. They do have experience with construction of a vertical wall. They don't pour the vertical wall. So, maybe, Dan, if you could speak to that just a little bit for Kathy's concern.
Yes, so when Epic answered that question when it was asked, they actually didn't do a very good answer. And because of our work experience with them, I could probably have answered the question a lot better for them. So, really what it came down to, it came down to, you know, what kind of similar construction do they have? So, uh, this is the analogy I use a lot of times in the meetings, that a swimming pool is very similar to a wastewater treatment plant. It's tanks, it's pumps, it's water transferring, things like that. And so, Epic has had several projects where they've had to do the tank portion of it. So, they just did the James Town Medical Surgical Center, where they had to put a large concrete tank underneath the building so they could do the fire pump, very comparable to vertical pool construction. They've done many tall walls. They've done very complicated walls as well. So, when Brad answered, well, we really haven't, he just didn't give a very good answer. However, I know that they've done this work before, so... And like everybody's mentioned, they don't perform the work. They do the carpentry. They do the steel erection. Ports and Construction, they were one, somebody that we were trying to get in to do the construction management. But they chose to not do the CM at-risk, because they want to do the work. They would rather just come in and do the work and have somebody else manage the project. And I think that was, that was indicated to some, some people as well. So, they would have been perfect for the job. They could have come in, but it would not have been a construction manager. It would have been a, a project that was bid out. They would have been a general contractor. And then we wouldn't have that third-party oversight that we were looking for.
Ken, you had a question?
Well, my question relates to something else. Because how do you spell Epic? Where's this epic along with the road to Madison?
This epic is E.P.I.C. I'm not sure. I think it's the same.
I think they spell it the same.
Yeah.
It's the same.
It's spelled the same.
Epic is being sued.
Which epic? This epic doesn't have anything to do with that epic.
Separate.
They're, they're different.
Different.
They're different groups.
I thought I'd tell you about...
Yep.
Epic is being sued.
Yep.
For health reasons.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions? If not, are we ready for a motion?
No other questions. I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and offer contracts to Epic Construction for the services of the construction manager at-risk regarding the Aquatic Center reconstruction within a base project budget of $6.9 million.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Ken to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Epic Construction out of Keeler for, to be our CMAR for the Aquatic Center within a base budget of $6.9 million. Collette will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Cap? That was yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Noel?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and thank you to you guys for moving so quickly. I understand that, uh, that that requires a lot of extra time. So, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, building permits for hail damage reconstruction. Joe?
Yes, so at the last meeting, I provided a memo with information on building permits and kind of some related topics from the hailstorm. And at that meeting, council asked the staff to look into, excuse me, some, the idea of offsetting, reducing, or eliminating the fees related to building permits for the hailstorm repair. So, I, I did provide some additional information for your consideration tonight. So, I won't go over the stuff that I presented last time, but just as kind of an update. So, as of this morning, we've issued 368 permits that I would say are related to hailstorm damage repair. So, of those 368, 25 have been issued to the owner, the property owner, which is 7%. 343 were issued to the building contract, would be 93%. So, so my initial thought with those kind of numbers is, if we're talking about a refund to the fees that have been paid for these permits, you know, a refund is going to go back to the person or business or entity that obtained the permit and paid the fees. So, in this case, those fees are going to go back to the contractor in the majority of those times. So, it's questionable if the property owner is going to see any benefit from any of those kind of a refund or reduction. So, I also reached out to all the insurance agencies in Platteville. And I also spoke directly to several of the claims adjusters directly that were working in Platteville. I did not hear back from all of them, but there was definitely a consensus that the insurance payment will cover the building permit fee. It's if it's included as part of the overall project costs related to the repairs. So, again, it was definitely a consensus that they all recommended that the permit fee be included in those overall costs. And that's part of the reason why these contractors obtain the permit, so they can absorb that cost into their bid, and then it would be included in the settlement from the insurance company. If you decide to go forward with some type of reduction, staff would need some guidance on how we, as far as start, not necessarily starting, but stopping. Because I know back in 2009 was our last major hailstorm, we definitely were issuing roofing permits well into 2010. So, we would need to, some guidance on as far as where we start and stop this type of a reduction if we go that route. So, some alternatives for consideration. It wouldn't have a direct impact on the permit fees themselves, but for property owners that meet certain income restrictions or requirements, I was able to locate four programs that are out there that could help cover some of the costs of the building repairs themselves if their insurance does not cover that. So, I included some of that information in your packet. So, one is through the city, Southwest CAP has one, Rural Development has one, and then WIDA has a program. So, they're all income-based, so not everybody would qualify. But I think there, there are some options out there that could provide some assistance. And another option for consideration would be, rather than just the across-the-board reduction or elimination of the fee, would be to set aside some of the money coming in from these fee payments and establish a pool of money that, or a fund that, a property owner that is burdened by these permit fees, that they could apply for essentially a reduction or refund to that payment. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it would be much easier on staff to do that than provide all this reduction. And I think equally as important, it would have a, more of a direct benefit to the property owners that are... So, I think that would be an option for consideration. So, I guess my recommendation would be that we maintain the current building permit fee schedule that we have in place now. We obviously will work with any property owner that's impacted, and as far as helping them find alternative funding assistance. And then if council is interested, we could look at forming a new fund that they could apply for if they're burdened by the building permit fees. Any questions?
Questions?
Well, Joe, thank you for all of your work on this and finding these four different programs. Is this something that could be just posted on the city website for people to access? Or maybe it is also?
Yeah, I mean, some of it already is. Obviously, one of the programs is our own program. But yeah, I'm sure we could work with... Jody's not here.
But Jody is here.
She can help spread the word on the other ones, provide some links and so forth.
I think it's a very good idea of doing what you're proposing. If, if most of the permits are being taken out by the contractors, I, I don't see why we would, you know, have to do anything else.
And they're being submitted then with the total cost of the project and for reimbursement. So, I do like the idea, though, of using some of the building permit fee money to establish a special fund, so that if there are people who are burdened by doing that and are doing their own work, maybe they didn't have insurance or whatever, that there's a way for them to move forward. But I think your proposal is a good one. Additional comments or...
I'm, I would just like to address the, the idea that the contractors coming in and paying for that permit. They may be, but it's the homeowner that's paying it. It's in the bid for the contractor. So, the homeowner is still paying for that building permit. There, I mean, the contractors, I'm going through it right now. My contractor is charging me. So, um, so it's really not that the contractors are doing this out of the goodness of their heart and not passing that on to the property owners. That's just a...
But the, but the adjuster, at least in my case, included the permit fee in the listing of things that they were going to reimburse. Maybe it was just my insurance, but...
Like I said, that was definitely the consensus that I got from the insurance folks was that fee would be covered in the majority of cases by the insurance payment.
By, by the insurance payment.
By the insurance adjuster or the insurance company?
By the insurance company.
The payment that you, the property owner receives from the insurance company, that's an eligible expense to include in that payment. So, that would be captured.
And I, I don't know. I, I think the idea of offering these programs, but it comes with a little bit of hesitation on my part, too, that if, if, if you find this burdensome, well, it's, it's money out of your pocket. And most people that I have talked to have either had to... Insurance isn't covering everything, so they have a deductible. They have depreciation of roofs is a big thing. So, I know a lot of people that have had to borrow money to cover that cost, or taking it out of retirement accounts, 401Ks. So, I guess I just would like, if there was something that we could do as a city to acknowledge what all the, every single property owner in this community, they've been affected. And yeah, some people may, that's okay, 150 bucks. There are some people, yeah, $150. But are they, what are we saying if it's a grant program or something? How many of those people are going to come? And I'd just like us to be a little more... I don't know.
Compassionate?
Compassionate, yeah. That, that we want to do something. And I'm, I'm not comfortable going out and talking to the people that have come to me and say, well, we, we're, we're going to, you can look at these programs to help if you... That, it's great, but I've also had calls from people that said, I, I've heard that the city might be, the city council might be getting to waive the, the building permit fee, or at least cut it down. I think that's fantastic. It's a PR thing, too. So, I guess I'm just kind of all over the place with that. I, I don't know. And I realize the timeline is something that definitely has to be, has to be addressed, because it could go on forever. So...
Would have to be retroactive.
I have a question, Joe. Do you have any idea how many buildings in the city of Platteville may have been affected? I mean, we can say probably most of them, but how many buildings? How many houses are there? Do we know?
I, I, no, I do not know the answer to that.
Thousand?
Talk to 90 people?
That's just one, one person, one...
Oh, one firm that had 90 claims. Okay.
They don't have enough staff, workers to cover more.
Right. That's true.
They do about the fact that you may have some better, better than what is required. So, who's going to pay? And metal on it has better quality than anything.
Well, yeah, it takes a building permit to replace your roof or replace your siding, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, there's a building permit required. And the, one question that's been asked, will your taxes go up because you now had a building permit and you had your siding replaced or your roof replaced? And I think the answer has been that if you do substantially what was there and don't make improvements... So, for instance, if you had a shingle roof and you decided to replace it with a metal roof, your taxes would probably go up. However, if you had a metal roof and replaced it with shingles, maybe your taxes would go down. However, if you had a metal roof and replaced it with shingles, maybe your taxes would go down because it's not as desirable. I mean, I...
Excuse me, Barb. Maybe we're trying to micromanage this a little bit too much. I think that it's a good idea to let people know that we understand and have concerns for them for paying for the building permit. Most of the contractors include it, yes. Most state insurance companies probably put that in their insurance claim for repayment. So I would like to see us basically do this on, perhaps, what I want to call demand. In other words, if somebody has a situation where they feel that they are low-income, not able to afford to make that extra payment and it's not included in the insurance quote that they're given. I know that's maybe a little bit paperwork there, but the fact is, I don't want us to micromanage this. Just let's make it simple for everybody. If they have a situation where they feel that their building permit is not equitable to their situation, that it goes to you, Joe. And then if you have questions, you come to us. But I think otherwise, it's, we're trying to divvy up what's what, who goes where. I really think that we want to, as Kathy said, let people know that we have concerns. And we want to take that in consideration. But in most cases, they're going to be reimbursed through their insurance or the contractor's going to include it in part of the price, which is based on, in most cases, what the insurance estimate is the damage. So I don't know. Tony, you're in the business. You tell us.
I don't do that kind of insurance. But my thought is that I don't know how you would regulate the 257 businesses that have got, or that have paid for the fee and guarantee that it goes back to the people. Like, any possible way to do that? I love the idea, but I just don't know how to make it work.
So Tom, it was as if you were speaking to the sample affirmative motion that Joe had.
Correct.
So do you want to make a motion?
Have it in front of me.
I don't know if there's a right or a wrong.
Can I clarify for a moment? Because the motion that I'm looking at is a little bit different than I think what... That include, the wording here includes a reduction or a refund to the building permit fee?
To apply for.
Okay. Because the concept of a refund is very complex to implement at this point. And we haven't talked about that aspect, so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
So you're saying that they should apply for a, I'm trying to look at a word that says they don't have to pay it? A forgiveness, a forgiveness of the fee before it's paid?
Perhaps we'd be talking about some kind of a grant or, you know. I just wanted to make sure that I understood what action was potentially going to be taken and how it might impact staff. If we are just allowing people to perhaps apply for assistance with the fee as opposed to refunding a previously paid fee. As we talked about, if we were refunding, we'd be refunding to whoever paid the fee, which may not be the house owner. It might be, you know, contractor.
They'd need to show, Nicola, they'd need to show that it wasn't covered in the insurance claim.
That's my understanding based on the discussion in the intent.
So maybe instead of saying to property owners burdened by the cost of motion to direct staff to develop a program whereby property owners could apply for a grant to cover the cost of building permits.
That sounds great. Perhaps building permits that were not covered by...
You know, by, specifically those not covered by insurance payments or something like that. I think that's what you were trying to say, right?
Yes.
Apply for a grant for, and to prove that their insurance company wasn't including that in their line item. Yeah, I get line item descriptions.
The wording of it.
Well, how about motion to direct staff to develop a program that allows property owners to apply for a grant to cover the cost of building permits when that building permit fee is not covered through their insurance reimbursement or insurance payment or insurance, whatever you call it.
Thank you.
I make them. Collette, did you get that?
Whatever you said.
Yeah, you can listen to it now. All right.
If this home rehabilitation loan, if this is going to be part of a package? Because if so, in the name of Ken, I think I found a typo.
Oh, well, that might be true. And that is already on our website, right, Joe?
Yes.
The home rehabilitation?
Yeah.
So please direct any typos to Joe. That can be corrected.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to have staff develop a grant program that property owners can apply for a grant for the cost of building permits in the event that they can, that those building permits are not covered as part of their insurance settlement. And you made that motion.
Can I amend my motion?
No, you can't. Amend your own motion. Do we have a second to our motion?
Second, then.
There is no motion if we don't have a second.
Right.
So would you like to make a new...
We need to move on.
No, would you like to make a new motion?
I would like to make a motion with the exact wording, but then add that we had talked two weeks ago about keeping the... And I think Tony was one that suggested maybe a compromise to, for the city to retain $50. Was that Tony? Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about...
So that some of the city's expense is covered. So that, in other words, it wouldn't be a full refund or a full...
Well, it might be a full grant for, if my building permit costs $150 and I'm not, it's not going to be covered by my insurance. I don't have insurance. It costs me $150. I could apply for a grant for the whole $150.
I think this would just be a small, may I speak?
Yeah.
I think this may be just a small percentage of the community that would even be eligible for this grant. And if I remember correctly, what Tony had suggested was just having a flat rate of $50 for everybody regardless of situation. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so in this case, the city would be taking in a lot more than 50 for the majority of the people because it would be covered by insurance and they would be paying like, whatever the average was, $100 or $150.
So I don't think we have to put that in. Back to the motion of having a grant program for property owners that could cover the cost of building permit fees due to hail damage in the April 18th, in the April 18th, 2025 storm. That has to be applied for within a year. How's that? By June 1, 2026. And they have to prove that their insurance company did not pay it. Okay? That's the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Collette? We're going to try and vote.
Okay. The motion was made by, I'm sorry.
Kathy.
I'll claim it.
Okay. Kathy and seconded by Bob.
Okay, got it. All right, Killian.
I'm not concerned about this. We have 10 properties affected, so it can go different ways.
Are you voting yes or no?
I'm voting no.
Okay. Okay. Cap?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on now to the sewer rate increase. Now, this is the sewer rate increase before any, before any construction on Pine Street. So is this going to be you, Howard, or Nicola, or who?
I'll start off. Based on our financial management plan, we need to increase rates for our sanitary sewer utility. We asked Ellers to perform a cost of service study and that cost of service study is part of this packet. And they recommended a rate adjustment. And we were concerned that an across-the-board increase might increase rates unfairly on different classes of users. And so the results are that we would have a slight decrease for residential users, slight increase for commercial users, and larger increases for multifamily, industrial, and public users. Public users are the city school district and UW-Platteville. Industrial users are the ones who send high-strength waste to the city, our cheese factories. And they also get additional fees charged based on the strength of the waste. And those fees would also go up based on their impact. The Water and Sewer Commission voted to recommend the proposed increases. And staff is recommending that we approve a motion to increase for the billing period starting June 15th, which means that the customers would see the increase in their bills on July 31st.
Okay, question. And actually, this was supposed to be, this D increase was built into the 2025 budget, so we're already six months of not collecting it. Is that correct?
That is correct, but in the study, Ellis took that into consideration in calculating the rates.
Okay, so you see the rate schedule there? Actually, for a meter in a home, I think probably most meters in homes are 5/8 meters, right?
Yes, they're either 5/8 or 3/4.
All right.
But they're the same rate.
It goes down 20... No.
34 cents.
34 cents.
A month.
Pretty good, I guess. So any questions? Go ahead, Tom.
I moved to approve the new sewer rates as proposed by Ellers in the attached rate schedule effective for the billing period starting June 15th, 2025.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second by Lynn to approve these new sewer rates effective June 15th, 2025. Collette will vote. Killian?
Yeah.
Cap?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that ends the action items on our agenda. We only have one information item, and that is annual reports and strategic planning. Lynn?
Thank you, Madam President. As I put out into an email to you folks, our directors have spent a lot of time in putting together an annual reports that they've recorded. And we place them on the internet for your viewing at your convenience. And the concept of these reports is to kind of give some background in regards to... Am I showing up here? No, there we go. The context of these reports is to give you folks kind of a general background on things that went well last year, things that are happening this year, a very brief summary on financial positions and such, and to kind of put some context to the conversation that we're going to have heavily in strategic planning and also kind of in the comprehensive plan. So I wanted to make sure that everybody saw how to get to these presentations. And then this will also be a nice forum that will have this recorded on our website for those that are viewing at home and those viewing at a different time. So if you go to the Platteville main page and you hover over City Hall, drop down on City Manager, see a picture of a handsome man there. On the left side, left side there, you'll see Values and Strategic Plan. Click on that. And it's going to kind of lay out then the values and strategic planning of the city that we have in place. And then you're going to see the Department, 2025 Department Director Annual Reports. And these are all hyperlinks to reports that are stored off in YouTube land. As mentioned in the email again, the context of putting these in a recorded type of a format for you is so that we're not necessarily using your time during the meetings to present you with the information, but getting it to you in between meetings and then anticipations that you can have questions, concerns that come of these, again, with the context of future planning. So I know this was put out in short order just late last week. It is a lot of material to get through and listen to it. One of my council members reported back, though, as a technique on YouTube as well. You can increase the speed of the film that's playing. So I think Bob started at listening at 1, moved up to 1 and 1/2 by the last video was listening at like 3.5 or something, like chipmunk speed to get through it pretty quick, so. But then also, of course, it's got pause buttons on there, too, so you can pause and digest the information that's being presented to you on the slide. Again, looking for your feedback. If you can send us questions, concerns via email, if you can send them to myself, CC, to the director, that it's applicable, we can try to get those informations not only to you, but then to kind of put a report together so we can hit some frequently asked questions or concerns that you might have to try to inform you how things are going and to kind of, again, put an administrative perspective on where we're at as we get into strategic planning, comprehensive planning. Madam President.
So any questions or comments?
Only comment I have is excellent idea. Thank you.
So my, I think it's a great idea. But I think, I'm going to suggest that in order for me, people to move through this, that we say at X number meeting, at the next meeting, we particularly want people to listen to or to view whatever, too.
Some homework, a homework schedule kind of advice?
Schedule so that, you know, so that it's like, okay, now you're supposed to have the fire department and the police department done. Did you, you know, because then that kind of keeps you on schedule. And then the next meeting, you should have, and I don't have any particular order. I don't know if based on your, I've seen three of them already, so. But I don't know if based on the way they were developed, if you have an idea of how, what kind of order it would be good. But I really think it would be good if we, it was like, so that, so that I don't view it and now I ask you questions. But now, four weeks later, Kathy views it, the same one. And now she asks you the questions because she's ready with those questions. And so then we're like, kind of fighting back and forth because we're not moving in a...
I can do that. Maybe we group them in context of public safeties and education, entertainment, recreation night and those types of things. If you don't have access to this, Ken, if you need access to these and viewing these, you're certainly welcome to, to call me. We can make and schedule some time here at City Hall to help get you dialed in to be able to help with viewing as well.
Okay. I think there's only one more motion needed for tonight.
Also move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second... Okay, we have a motion by Tom and a second by Kathy to adjourn, uh, collect? Killian?
Yes.
Cap? No?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.